Good evening. Welcome to the June 4, 2025 School Committee Meeting. Item 1.1, District Vision and Core Values. The Barnstable Public Schools educates the whole child by creating a student-centered school culture that addresses students' physical, social, emotional, and academic needs by creating a safe and healthy learning environment in which all students are challenged, supported, and engaged. Core values. In Barnstable Public Schools, we value commitment, collaboration, and community. Commitment: We are dedicated to the continuous learning and growth for all. Collaboration: We work together while keeping student needs at the center of all decision-making. Community: We build strong, respectful partnerships that support student success. Item 1.2, Statement by the Chair. Video or audio recording of meeting. This School Committee meeting is being recorded and broadcast on the Town of Barnstable's Government Access Channel. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the Chair must inquire whether anyone else is recording this meeting, and if so, please make their presence known. Thank you. Item 1.3, The Pledge of Allegiance. This evening's Pledge of Allegiance is led by one of our preschool students, Zion DiPaolo. Zion, would you like to come up? Please rise. Thank you. Zion, if you want to stay for one minute. Peter, do you have any comments?
Yeah.
Oh, do you want, would you like to say something else about your school? Tell us about your school?
Yes. The teachers are the best.
Wow. Wow. Your grades just improved, I'll tell you. Yeah, nice job with the Pledge of Allegiance. That was fabulous.
Good enunciation, well-spoken. Young man, excuse me, excuse me.
We do the same thing when Andre starts talking.
That's it, what I, I need to sing your praises a little bit more because you did a, you did a fine job. But a good job, and you're gonna have a good end of the year and a good summer. Well done, young man.
Thank you so much for coming. We're glad you enjoyed your school year. Have a great summer.
Thank you.
Okay, do you want to, does he want to come up? Up and get a picture?
Yes.
Okay. So, our highlight in education, and I know everybody's busy, so we may need to rearrange, but item 2.1 is the DECA Competition Experience. Do we have the DECA group? Not yet. Okay. 2.2, Barnstable Intermediate School, the Field Trip to Washington, DC. Is your group ready, Mr. Hurley?
We are indeed.
Thank you. Well, they're keying that up, do they want to introduce themselves?
I'm Hudson.
My name is Bischlex.
My name is Kylie.
My name is Todd.
All right, thank you.
So these are five of our 99 students who traveled with us this year. I'm giving the technology to Ms. Wallace because we don't want to mess up. But yet again, this is our second trip, and what a fantastic experience, but you don't want to hear from me, you want to hear from these five great students. So I'm gonna back out of the way, and we'll start. So, Second Annual Washington, DC Field Trip, what are we looking at? Go ahead, Bish.
The field trip had many different things, and it was very educational, but it was also very fun at the same time. I'd say that we all learned a lot from the experience, and I wish that it is continued.
We're gonna wait for our slideshow. There we go. So as it said, we had 117 total travelers, 99 students this year. That's up from 68 last year. Five parents, 12 chaperones, and the nurse. All right. I tried to do it from the side. It didn't work. So we had the 117 travelers, 99 students, up from 68 last year. Five parents, 12 chaperones, and then we brought our nurse along this year, and we are glad to have her with us. Alyssa and I just didn't cut it as nurses last year. So, four days, three nights, three coach buses, one ship hitting a Mexican, one Mexican ship hitting a Brooklyn Bridge on our way home, and a subway strike. But other than that, everything was really, it was a wonderful thing. So, monuments and tours. What were your favorites, folks?
The National Zoo.
I really liked the Capitol Building.
I enjoyed the zoo because I got to learn about a lot of different animals that I didn't know existed.
My favorite was the Veterans Day Memorial.
I loved the Holocaust Museum.
So as we're going through some of these pictures here, this, this is our first night arriving there. We got to go through the World War II memorials, and we got to take some pictures under the lights at the memorials. What'd you all think of the evening at the memorial?
The evening was very nice, and it was a good way to introduce us to Washington, DC.
It was fun with all our friends, and it was really pretty.
I enjoyed looking at the lights. It was really fun.
Okay. All right. Part of our trips also took us to the National Archives, Mount Vernon itself, and so, for me, this was the first time seeing actually the Declaration of Independence, but also the Magna Carta. I had no idea the Magna Carta was at the National Archives, so I was kind of geeking out on that, you know? But everybody else, that was a big time seeing our Declaration of Independence and
What I really liked about day two was the ghost tour, because we got to hear these ghost stories of the past. It was very informational and very fun.
I also enjoyed the ghost tours and how they like tried to spice up and entertain us during the trip.
So, as you can see, we all got our chance to sit in front of the White House and take our photo stops. Mel, what was your favorite part about the White House photo stop?
I liked seeing where the president lives.
It was also really cool where he lived. It was just cool to see the White House, because it's something that like you really want to see.
And then our Capitol Building tour itself. Again, I know it's tough to stand in front of a committee and talk about where we've been and everything else, but seeing these things in real life, it's, it's, it's a game-changer, you know? And we talk with the students about the fact that there are opportunities for them, even in high school, where they can go on internships, and they can become involved in their government and start learning early on. So we like to think of this as a bridge to getting connected to your government, which is not that far away from us. Capitol Building?
Um, the architecture on the back was, or on the outside was really pretty, and learning about how it expanded over time was really cool, and the art inside was really pretty and interesting.
I enjoyed going to the US Capitol, because I learned many things about the government. I got to learn more things about presidents, and honestly, it was amazing.
This was our first opportunity to go to the African-American History Museum this year. Five floors, six floors? I think it was six floors. I mean, we had a wonderful time going through them. Obviously, we went to the sports floor, and then we got down to, and you can see a little bit of the dancing. That was learning the, oh, what was the name? I can't even think of the name of the dance right now, but it was like a little digital display. I'll let them tell you about it. Come on, Hudson, we know you danced.
If you don't talk, we'll have to make you dance.
Please don't. I enjoyed the African-American Museum, because I learned a lot about history, and there were some good parts, but there are also a lot of bad parts.
Bad parts meaning what?
Slavery and racism, segregation.
So not necessarily bad parts of the museum, just parts of our history that you may not have been fully aware of.
I enjoyed going to the African-American Museum, because I got to see a lot of African-American famous people, and I got to see how they impacted the world.
What was your favorite part of the African-American?
I enjoyed seeing all the like sports athletes and how they impacted African-American
So we also got to go to the Arlington National Cemetery, and the students got to see the changing of the guard, which was a pretty, you know, somber experience, and also one that they learned. The reasoning behind it, which I thought was especially helpful for them, understanding why there's so much reverence for the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier.
Personally, I thought the, the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier was a very respectful thing to do, and yeah, it was very nice to see.
And here we go for one of the students' favorites. We ended this year with the National Zoo, which was a wonderful way to get them walking around before our quite long bus trip home. And we got to see the pandas, which was great, so maybe they can share their favorite part about the zoo to wrap things up.
The National Zoo was very nice, because I got to see many different animals, and I also got to learn more about the animals.
Despite rumors, that is not me, that is a panda lying down eating. Thank you so much. Thank you all very much.
Jen?
Young people, young people, we have some questions. Come on, come on, come on back. I'm gonna have some questions for you.
First of all, I'm sorry I missed the first part of it, because DC is one of my favorite places, even in troubled times, but it sounds like you guys had a great trip. I hope you saw George Washington's teeth at Mount Vernon. That's like my big thing. And if you'd worn black and white, maybe I would have said, but I don't think so.
It was under renovation this year in preparation for the 250th, so we couldn't see the teeth.
Okay, you'll have to go back to see the teeth. They're incredible. You'll never miss a dental appointment again, I promise you, if you see those teeth.
You kids are very impressive. Yeah, certainly, it seems like you got a lot out of this trip. I'll congratulate all the chaperones. I did, I think I told you last year, I did it once in my life, and never again. I literally had no sleep, because I was worried about, how's this going, and you know, just the day goes so fast, there's so much planned, and it looks like you guys did the same thing. How was the bus ride, you guys? Pretty bad?
The bus ride there was short, and it, but the bus ride back took a lot longer than it was supposed to take.
And how about the food? You guys must ate, you ate at different restaurants? Was that a good, good thing?
The food was very amazing.
Oh, good, terrific, terrific. Well done, everyone.
Andre.
Yeah, good presentation, guys. I know, they're more spirited, Mr. Hurley, during the school day. Cat got your tongue, but we're gonna get some of that out of you, spending time in a classroom, as I do with intermediate school students. So I was interested if you saw the Eternal Flame, the John F. Kennedy Memorial at Arlington, if you guys can speak to that. Somebody who hasn't spoke, come on up. The Eternal Flame at Arlington, which is the JFK Memorial.
I didn't personally see it, but I know a lot of people did. I heard good stories about it.
That's something, you know, a bit of, a bit of our history, right here, on Cape Cod and specific to Barnstable. So, again, I always like to say, because being a Barnstable graduate, we went to Montreal for our eighth grade trip with Madame O'Toole, who did a great job dealing with a school committee member now, who didn't have all of the manners that I'm trying to learn, but it was just such a memorable experience. I mean, it's been some years, so the opportunity to go to the Capitol, to see all these monuments. And so my last question, I'm not gonna hold you too long, but anybody considering public service, since you've been to the nation's capital to see our highest public servants, and now it's been demystified for you, you could clearly do it. Anybody have an interest possibly in public service? We'll keep, we'll keep working on you, only seventh grade. Good job, guys.
All right, thank you so much. The one thing that I want to communicate is an email that I received, I think we all received it, about how respectful and how well you represented the Barnstable community, and how impressed everybody who encountered you, how impressed everyone was with how you presented yourselves. And so I thank you for that, because as long as students continue to represent Barnstable as nice young citizens, these trips can keep happening. And it only takes one, one, you know, problem to make it so that we're not able to. So I do thank you for that. When there's a group as large as this, and you're with all these, all these other students who you may not regularly hang out with, that speaks volumes for all of your character. So I really appreciate the fact that you presented Barnstable well down in our nation's capital, and thank you for the presentation. And I've never been on the ghost tour, so the ghost tour, is that, do they, is it a simulation of when they come back and tell stories? Is that what it's about? I've been to DC about at least six times at various things, and never went to the ghost tour.
So it, they're in period costume, and they go around, and they tell about the different events that may have happened in Williamsburg around certain times in history. So, yes.
So that's kind of what I perceived it to be, but that sounds, sounds interesting, a little bit like what BUES used to do with the students' projects, only at a much higher level. So thank you all. Thank you to the chaperones, to the staff, to the parents who entrusted your children with these staff members, and I hope you're able to catch up on your sleep after such a trip. It's a lot. It's above and beyond. Thank you.
All right, so our, our next item is recognition of the students in the Advanced Studies and
Leadership Program and the Future Problem Solvers.
Hi, I'm Carrie Andrade. I am the Director of Teaching and Learning Pre-K to 5, and also the Director of Gateway K to 12. Tonight, I am here to recognize two groups of students that are definite highlights of our Barnstable population. The first, if you can see on the screen, we have some students, and I'm excited to announce to you all that we have sent 11 students to the University of Indiana for a Massachusetts State Champion Problem Solvers, to Indiana University to compete in the 2025 Future Problem Solving World Finals. So they arrived today, that was this morning, they left about 3 o'clock this morning, so I'm sure they'll be going to bed quite soon. But it was a safe trip. They start competing tomorrow. They are, there are students from all over United States competing, and the world. And they'll be applying their critical and creative thinking skills to this year's topic, which is the future of history. Problem solvers will address how we might preserve, protect, or safeguard historical knowledge, sites, structures, records, and artifacts in the future. How fitting for what we just heard from our Capitol. The 11 Barnstable students who placed at the state bowl will represent Massachusetts and Barnstable by competing in the world competition, and they are Matthew Broncaccio, Kathleen Ramos, Peter Andraj, Ally Bernardo, Ashley Cox, Madison McLaughlin, Leah Reese, Evan Pananen, Shelby Thompson, Grace Leibowitz, and Juniper Lepton. Their coaches, Deb Contrino and Christie Sally, are braving it with them in Indiana. Please extend your congratulations and wish these 11 competitors and their coaches the best of luck. So the next group of students that I'd like to recognize are the students who have been recommended for the Advanced Studies and Leadership Program. Each year, Barnstable Gateway works in partnership with Cape Cod Collaborative and Massachusetts Maritime Academy to select high-achieving students for participation in the Advanced Studies and Leadership Program. This July, grade seven and eight students, recognized tonight, are invited to attend a 10-day learning experience emphasizing project-oriented instruction, team building, and leadership development. Barnstable represents the largest group of students from the Cape and Islands who are invited to attend ASLP. I would like to recognize the students that were invited to represent Barnstable this summer. If I call your name and you are here, could you please come up and line the frontier? I saw a couple of you put your heads down. So, the students are Juliette Amster, Alexander Angelov, Lily Ballastrey, Ty Eric Carlson-Green, Kylie Case, just right up there, Chase Cash, Phoebe DeRosa, Kayden Douglas, Howard Dubner, Eva Duchesne, Benjamin Fletcher, Chris Freel, Isabel Gregaliut, Esther Wong, Hudson Martino, Jake Malloy, Thomas Montero, Declan O'Donnell, Matthew Oliva, Joseph Oliva, Edison Pananen, Evan Pananen, Evelyn Pacella, Tanara Palma, Bischlex Pradhan, Pietro Ramos, Charles Rainey, Gavin Strand, Carter Taylor, Aria Thapa, Grace Valencourt, and Nathaniel Velsaint. Congratulations. We would also like to thank the Enid Cobb Fund for the generous support in awarding seven scholarships for this program. Please give them a round of applause. So I'm gonna have you come in here, so we can get a picture of all of you. You can go in the front, too. If you are a family member and want to take a picture, now's your time, before they run.
You have worked hard, you deserve this, and we hope that A, you will represent Barnstable well, and B, you will have a wonderful time this summer. Congratulations. All right, continuing. They left before I could thank them and congratulate them, but it's a beautiful night. All right, item 3.1.
Bish is still here, you can congratulate him again.
Oh, Bish, congratulations. You're like a regular. He'll be a student, he'll be the envoy someday, perhaps. Public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per individual and 30 minutes total. Public comment at a Barnstable School Committee meeting is limited to the Town of Barnstable residents and taxpayers, Barnstable Public Schools employees, students, or family members. Speakers will be allowed up to three minutes to present their material, and must begin their comments by stating their name and town. An extension of the speaker's time may be granted at the discretion of the Chair. There will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. The Committee will take items under advisement, or the individual will request an item to be placed on a future agenda. The Chair will also allow public comment at her discretion during the meeting. Is anyone here for public comment? Come on up.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ruthia Mate. To be true, we moved from New York. I was in New York for 13 years, and during COVID time, I moved here with my son Bischlex and the younger one Krishna, who is just four years old now. I am so profound to know the education system, the schooling system, especially Barnstable, BIS and BUES, that my son has attended. It is really great how they put extra effort to accommodate new students, and also like providing them the opportunity to go to field trip, to ASLP program. It was challenging, and also he, he And also, he has been attending Gateway classes, so it's always motivating. Like, sometimes kids need extra push from the school, and that's what he gets, and I'm so happy about it. I just wanted to say thank you for you all, too, to provide the opportunity for Bishlex being, to be an envoy and express his thoughts about the overall timeframe. Thank you very much, that's all my comment is about. And thank you to his school also.
Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Is anyone else present for public comment? All right, seeing no one, public comment is now closed. Item 3.2, School Committee Subcommittee and Liaison Reports.
I'll let you comment on the policy.
Okay. Jen will be back, I'm sure. Andre, do you have any subcommittee or liaison?
I'll go after Jen, she's finished.
I'll report on the policy subcommittee met on May 30th. We revised Policy JJF, the Student Activity Accounts Management, which is on tonight's agenda for a first read. We also discussed the creation of a cellphone policy, but didn't draft anything new. The principals are going to gather more information from the staff at their schools, and we would like to get some family input and then determine whether or not a school-wide or district policy is needed, and if so, what should be included. So I would recommend that families are on the lookout over the coming months, and if you're interested in cellphones in our schools, that you attend one of the gatherings that will be held.
Thank you.
Jen, do you have any comment?
Yeah, I have nothing to report, thank you.
Okay. So now we're on item 3.3, School Committee Comments. Jen?
I'm good, actually.
All right, Peter?
Very brief. I was thinking how beautiful the weather is the last few days. I was at a field day for the preschool on Monday, it was gorgeous, absolutely gorgeous. And then seeing you guys last night for the awards and scholarships, it was such a wonderful day and great evening, and today, another beautiful day. And, you know, and I know this can't last, so I looked at the weather for Saturday. It's questionable. Now, I just had one question, in case anyone's watching, like, do we ever cancel a graduation? Because I remember, two years ago, no, it wasn't a lot, it was a windy, rainy, was it last year?
Two years.
Two years ago, okay. Is there ever, like, people like doing what I did, looked at the weather forecast for Saturday and said, oh my God, are they going to cancel?
I can guarantee that the high school administration and central office administration is looking at the weather for Saturday. We did hold it two years ago in some pretty inclement weather and rain. It's always a difficult decision, but I think we reluctantly, we are reluctant to change the date and time. We know that there are family members who may be traveling from out of state. We know that families make plans for graduation parties, or they have reservations at restaurants, and so we're pretty reluctant to make changes. The last forecast I saw was a little more optimistic with rain holding off until the afternoon, so.
Seems like the weather I get is always possible rain or rain or clouds.
Yes, it looked like maybe the morning, but earlier, it looked like it was clearing and possible showers in the afternoon, so, yeah.
Andre?
Thank you, Kathy. In terms of my subcommittee report, my computer was booting up, so I wanted to obviously provide an update in terms of the collaborative. Last meeting, I reported that the Articles of Agreement with the schools had been accepted. Our last meeting was mostly focused on the budget and looking to conclude this school year on a positive note as we move forward into the next school year. Dr. Hanscom has kept the committee members informed, and I think it'll be an active summer and already preparing the collaborative for next year, particularly with the inclusion, which I firmly support, of Plymouth as one of the area schools. So that was my subcommittee comments. In terms of my school committee comments, a few items to touch on. We'll start macro and then we'll bring it down to the micro. But we have a new commissioner, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. That's going to be Pedro Martinez will be our new commissioner under the leadership of Governor Healy. He's coming in, he was the CEO previously of the Chicago Public Schools, and there's a good amount of enthusiasm for him to be our next commissioner. He comes in noting, things that I speak to, that Massachusetts is where public education began, and Massachusetts leads the nation in public education, and we want to keep it that way. So I'm looking forward to the new leadership of Department of Elementary and Secondary Education with Dr. Pedro Martinez coming in from the Chicago Public Schools. There's been much talk here, and there will be in this meeting, about our budget, budget priorities. We had a very spirited budget season. I myself firmly would like us to keep our personnel, our staff members who make the difference in the classrooms as much as possible, and that's going to, that support is going to continue. But I wanted to report to the community that not only was the Massachusetts budget passed by Governor Healy, but the education budget passed at $1.95 billion, and this is an increase of over $650 million from the last fiscal year. Specific items that we talk about and are subject for conversation, Chapter 70 funding, there was, I believe it's a one-point, here we go, right here, as I get my notes in order. But in terms of our Chapter 78, the FY '26 budget will be a 6.1 increase in Chapter 70 funds for our district. So first of all, I want to thank the leadership that we have here in the Cape and Islands, Representative Kip Diggs, who's on the Ways and Means Commission, fighting hard for our schools, Representative Ziaros, Representative Dylan Fernandez, and of course, State Senator Julian Seer for their efforts. But when we're having these conversations about our budget and what we need to keep, what we need to retain, these are tough decisions, and the conversation about, well, it's only going to get worse in the future, so we need to tighten it now, you know, because we can't have these positions and this rhetoric that I'm hearing, and again, I was firmly in support of keeping as many staff members as possible, all right? When the rubber meets the road, I think that's where the priority needs to be, all right? And we need to go year to year recognizing that Massachusetts leads the nation in public education, is fully committed to public education. And not, I recognize there are some troubling trade winds at the federal level in terms of funding. Proposed cuts, I will add, proposed cuts to public, to many different things, but our leadership, Governor Moore Healy, and specifically our Attorney General Andrew Campbell, is fighting very hard for the people of Massachusetts, and some of these proposed cuts are being pushed back in the courts. We're going to court and we're winning, and this funding for our students, our families, our communities, is being restored. So again, our state budget passed, and there's been a notable increase of the overall budget as well as the Chapter 70 funding, among other things. So I want the community to be aware of that as we talk about our budgetary decision. Peter, I just have a couple more, and yes, you'll have some commentary. But bringing it to the local level, right here in Barnstable, we're having a number of conversations about who we are, who we've been, where we're going in this community, important conversations. But I just wanted to thank Mike and Mary Geira, specifically, for their work over many years with the Cobb Astro Park. We talked about it the last meeting, it's been rebranded, now it'll be Red Hawk Ridge. But for many years, the Cobb Astro Park and many students, a majority of students, wanted to keep the academic name. We're going in an athletic direction, but we talked about it last meeting, the Astro Park is a place of science and discovery, it's a place of academic inquiry. Red Hawk Ridge it is, we'll move forward with that, but it is important to understand where things come from. It didn't just happen out of nowhere. We want to be respectful of our, again, history, our traditions. We make changes, but again, you know, we don't always have to make, you know, if it's not broke, you don't have to fix it. And what I'm getting at with that statement is, and I keep coming back to this, because everyone's not aware, that that was a barren wasteland. It used to be where people took their cigarette breaks. The quad is what it was called when I went there, to Barnstable High School. There was high grass, okay, and no understanding or idea that it could be anything else. And it became the Cobb Astro Park because of Mike Geira, because of Mary Geira, because of Ed O'Toole and others. And it's just a tremendous jewel that we have in this community. So we want to thank those people. A big part of me being on the school committee, doing this work as an educator, is to maintain some of these things, many of these things, that benefited so greatly during my time at Barnstable High School, and you want to see it passed on to others. We'll talk about, we had the prom and celebration, my comments, and I'm going on, I'm going to let other people in, but my slides are going to be at the end of the meeting, no problem, because we have a packed meeting, but I'd be remiss if I didn't note the great work of our celebration, parents, families, to have that event that I was fortunate to be at. But I only bring that up because as I'm in the building, I can see the Science Hallway, and it's just beautiful. So others, you know, and that was Mike Geira that renovated that hallway, and other hallways, in his own time, and out of the goodness of his own heart, and it's still making a positive difference. And so as we move forward, Red Hawk Ridge, okay, it's a new name, I mean, and we're going to do our darndest to maintain the standard that has been, but it didn't, Red Hawk Ridge, Cobb Astro Park, it didn't just chance out of nowhere. It was the vision and the dedication and the hard work, Mike Geira, Mary Geira, and others, and I wanted to thank them during my school committee comments.
Peter, did you want to?
Unless he has some breaking news that I haven't heard of. I thought you said 6.1% increase of funds coming to Barnstable? Did you say that?
Peter, that's for the state overall, the Chapter 70 funds statewide have been increased.
Okay, but we don't know what's coming our way.
Not as of yet, Peter, no.
Okay, because I, I don't know, maybe I heard you wrong or something, but that's what I thought you said.
I'll have the superintendent clarify that for everybody. Are you ready? Or do you want to wait until you're?
I can do it in my comments.
Okay, all right, yeah. To make sure that it's accurately reported, okay.
Point of order, there was no inaccuracies in my statements. My statements were reported accurately, and I'm looking forward to the superintendent's clarification possibly, but my statements per what our numbers are, were completely accurate. Thank you.
Some school committee comments. I don't want to waste time repeating what Peter said. We're all trying to attend as much as we can. I was able to attend the retirement dinner Monday evening to see staff who have given many years to the students of Barnstable. I wanted to thank the staff who were not able to attend on Monday to make sure that they know that we appreciate everything that they've done over the years for the students and to wish them well. Senior recognition last night was amazing again. Congratulations to the success of all of our seniors, and a big thank you to the donors. I believe, I could be wrong, but I think it was over $400,000 in scholarships donated by the local community and other organizations so that our students may continue with their educational journeys. I'm really disappointed that I missed today's half parade at Centerville Elementary. I was so hoping to be able to comment. That's one of my favorites, and I have to make this my full-time job and maybe resign from the existing one so I can get to these things. And I, too, am looking forward to graduation on Saturday. COVID, we canceled and then postponed and then had it in July, but that, out of all the years that my children were at Barnstable, I don't remember a shift even prior to that, so. Yeah, yeah, we're all, we're all in there, it'll be fine. Can't control it, can't worry about it, it'll be fine. All right. So item 3.4, the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I'll start with a number of items, but then conclude with a budget update. I just want to recognize, we don't have our senior envoys here today, but they are super busy at the high school planning for graduation and doing all things culminating in senior events. So it started with exams, which I think they had shared about the last time they were here. A few weeks back on Friday, the 23rd, they had their prom with the after-prom party that Andre was alluding to. We want to thank all of the chaperones and all of the volunteers and all of the contributors who continued to support that really important event. There was a senior trip to Six Flags last Friday, and everybody had a great time. They've been busy this week with graduation rehearsals. Tomorrow, Principal Canetta has started what we hope to be a new tradition, all of the graduates are going to go around to the other schools. Previously, it had been BWB students would go to BWB and BCIS would go to BCIS, and this expands that. We have a number of students who join Barnstable at some point past K-3, and so all of the graduates will be going around across the district and serving as celebratory role models for their younger peers. And then, of course, we have graduation on Saturday at 10:00, and I already addressed the question in the elevator in the room, the million-dollar question about rain. We will hopefully be able to hold it, the rain looks like it's going to be in the afternoon, I just looked again, and we are reluctant to make changes unless it's really unsafe, but we will keep tabs up through Friday, you know, just watching that weather forecast. Kristin's going to talk a little bit about awards night, but that was a major event last night for our seniors. The guidance department, Karen McFarland, Karen McFarland did a wonderful job. We recognized over 144 students, which is nearly half of our graduating class. So Kristin's got a couple additional comments regarding it, but I just want to share my appreciation for the generosity of our community and the congratulations that I have for the academic excellence that was celebrated last evening. Just a reminder for our community, the last days of school are approaching very quickly. The last day of school for most of our schools, everybody except for BUES, is going to be June 18th, it's a Wednesday, and is a half-day for students. BUES started two days late, there was no wiggle room with the state. I did have a personal conversation and exchange with the acting commissioner at the time, and so they are being expected to hold the full 180 days. And so they will be in school for a full day on June 18th, a full day on June 20th, and then students have a half-day on Monday, June 23rd, and June 19th is a holiday. A couple upcoming items of interest, I had mentioned them at my last report, but just to think they're worth repeating. The state is having a graduation council under the governor's direction. Secretary Tuttweiler is leading that, and they're hosting a listening session at Barnstable High School on Monday, June 9th at 5:00 p.m. So that's an opportunity for educators, members of the public, to weigh in on what they think, what direction they think the state should go now that MCAS is no longer a competency determination qualifier. It's up to local policies, but there is, they intend to have some sort of state standard. And then we had to postpone the parent and guardian information night for incoming fourth-grade families at BUES due to something unforeseen, so we have postponed it and have rescheduled it for Monday, June 16th. We are planning to host some building tours, and so we are asking for people to RSVP so we can plan and make sure that we have enough to help guide families through the buildings. There are so many amazing things happening at our schools, and I'm sure Andre will share a number of them. and I'm sure Andre will share a number of them in the slides that he alluded to. I want to highlight two specifically. We just had an amazing representation of our music and performing arts department. 121 students in our ensembles in the performing arts department recently participated in the Music in the Parks competition at Westfield State University. The orchestra, chorus, band, and jazz band all competed against schools from New England, ranging from ensembles on Long Island up to New Hampshire. The orchestra and chorus received first place, earning a rating of superior and excellent, and won the overall top ensemble award. Additionally, the band and jazz band received second place with a rating of excellent. This is a significant accomplishment for our program. We are incredibly proud of the dedication and hard work that our students have put into their performances. This is an area that has been rebuilding for the past several years. And so it is really incredible to see the, the performing arts taking off here at Barnstable. I also want to note that we had a really positive seminar in the library where 40 of our high school interns shared the capstone projects from their internships, which is one of, one of our highlight programs, I think, at Barnstable High School. We had 29 senior interns, six in the environmental sciences, four in business, and one in graphic design. I had the opportunity to walk through the library, engage with many of our students. They shared what they learned about the profession they explored and also what they learned about themselves. Internships ranged from teaching to participating with the fire department, working with our own facilities department, local agencies, including town departments like the finance department and local businesses and law firms. I want to emphasize that students are leaving VHS not only with academics, but with real-world career skills and experiences, some of which will provide a jumpstart on future employment. And conversely, they may have also decided and ruled out an area that they don't wish to pursue, which can be just as valuable as a lesson. We're working on getting sites for 60 senior interns next year, seven through the environmental sciences, which are all placed, and seven business interns. So thanks to Erin Eastman for all of that coordination. Great job, everyone. And then lastly, budget update. So tomorrow night, Chris Dwelly, Deputy Director of School Finance, and I will be presenting the FY '26 budget to Town Council at their public hearing, where they expect that they will take action, hopefully in support of what we will present. The state budget is not yet confirmed. Process-wise, the Senate and the House are in conference committee, and so they are going back and forth between the various budget amendments that the Senate and the House have put forward. So it is not completely final. The state budget typically gets finalized sometime between mid and late July. As it relates to education funding, the House and the Senate budgets have some slight differences. One area where they do come together around is around Chapter 70. The governor's budget had an increment of an additional $75 per pupil. Both the Senate budget and the House budgets are proposing an additional $150 per pupil for Chapter 70 from minimum aid districts, which Barnstable is one. So we were expecting, in the preliminary budget, $392,250 for Chapter 70. Doubling that would be $784,500. This happens pretty much every year, where the governor comes in and then the Senate and the House come in higher. What ends up happening is that that money comes into the town as one of the sources of revenues. They look at other sources of revenues that are coming in. And then in the fall, it kind of gets reapportioned out to the town and to the schools through our reserves in the 60-40 split. So we typically don't make any changes at this time, but then see some adjustment in the ledger in the fall from the town's finance department. So that's where the budget stands. The percent change in Chapter 70 is 3.1% between the governor's budget and what is being proposed by the Senate and the House budgets. So more, more to come.
Questions, comments, Jen? Peter, Andre?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Hearn. And I stand corrected. The budget is, has not been passed, but these proposed increases are still on the table. And so I stand corrected. I was incorrect in terms of proposed and the process as it stands. But these proposals are on the table. And at our next meeting in July, we will come back to this. And if the budget is passed in July, then in August, we will see if these, again, proposed, proposed changes are in effect and how that affects Barnstable. So proposed, not passed, I stand corrected. I'll say it a third time. But if and when they are passed, I'm looking for some increases here in Barnstable. Thank you.
And I'm all set. Thank you. Item 3.5, Assistant Superintendent's Report. Kristin?
Thank you. So I have a couple things. As I typically do at our June school committee meeting, I wanted to provide the committee with a look back at the opportunities that our students have had this year due to the generosity of the Cobb Trust. I think you heard about one from our presenters, from the ASLP program. That is one of the, one example of how the Cobb Trust has supported our students. But each year, the Cobb Trust allocates funds to our schools to fund educational experiences for our students. These experiences are designed or propose, and/or proposed by educators to provide opportunities for students to extend what they are learning in class, both academic and social-emotional learning. This year, the Cobb Trust awarded Barnstable Public Schools $348,000. This actually represents an increase of 17% over last year. So I can say honestly, each year, the generosity of the Cobb Trust grows. This year, we had over 130 requests that were funded by the Cobb Trust. And although this is an estimate, but I would estimate that probably around 85% of our student enrollment benefited in some way from the Cobb Fund, Cobb-funded experiences, particularly as a number of requests were school-wide. So certainly, every school was able to participate in a school-wide event, but then there were others that were more classroom-based. So every student, you know, every student, around 85% had this opportunity, and some had multiple opportunities depending on the proposals that came in. Again, the ASLP scholarships were an example. The Cobb Fund also supported some of the Washington DC trip. The proposals spanned general education classrooms, special education classrooms, enrichment classrooms, and school events. Some of this year's proposals are reoccurring. For example, supporting the VHS after-prom celebration event, kindergarten orientation kits, touch-view interactive screens for our K-12 classrooms, and books for students who are new registrations. In addition to these, we saw proposals that provided students with Cape Cod experiences, really taking advantage of the, where we live, giving students an opportunity to learn about their community and local organizations of the Cape, including Long Pasture, Wellfleet Bay, Heritage Museum, the Mashpee-Wampanoah Museum, and exploring aquatic ecosystems, just as a few examples. We had a lot of proposals that supported the district's focus on literacy, from the Early Learning Center's multilingual library and real-world learning for young readers at BCIS, to expanding our library circulation of Spanish and Portuguese books, and then funding several author visits from local business belonging books. Additionally, some literature was purchased to support our new CKLA program to support the themes. And finally, the Cobb Trust helped with resources to support our core academics through STEM resources, forensics projects, the purchase of compound and stereo, stereomicroscopes at the high school. Again, just some examples of the many proposals that came in. And while I could go on and on with all the amazing experiences the Cobb Trust has afforded our students, I would like to wrap up with what I would call a very special funding opportunity from the Cobb Trust for the coming year. In addition to the $348,000 provided to the schools, the Cobb trustee, Steve Hesslinger, a few months ago, had reached out and asked if there were any big projects the district could use some support with. And as a result of this request, the Cobb Trust has provided the district with an, with an additional $140,000. Yes, $140,000, $45, sorry, $145,000 to support the purchase of our new secondary math program that will be implemented next year at BIS and VHS that we recently selected through the curriculum review process. I mean, it goes without saying, the impact on students. Again, that may bump us up to 100% of our students, having some impact by the Cobb Trust. But I would really like to give a special and very sincere thanks to Steve Hesslinger, whose truly unwavering support through the, as the Cobb trustee, has empowered our students of Barnstable Public Schools through really meaningful and enriching learning activities. I have a few other pieces of information. As has already been mentioned, last night was the VHS Senior Awards Night, truly a celebration of our seniors and their accomplishments, such a talented group, both in terms of academics and the arts and their active involvement in the community. And in recognition of their community involvement, the community responded in kind in the form of generous scholarship awards for our students. And as Kathy mentioned, this year, over $400,000 was awarded in local scholarships to the class of 2025. This is almost double the scholarships that were available last year. I think, give or take a couple students, but I think about approximately 145 students received scholarships. And I would also, again, echo what the superintendent said and really thanking Karen McFarland and Albert Mercado, particularly in the scheduling of the event, but in particularly in acquiring more scholarship funds. They really have broadened the net. And so the, again, the opportunities to support students, as we know, college tuitions are on the rise. So I think it's really a wonderful way to support our students beyond the scope of the high school. And speaking of seniors, the Drama Club is hosting their first annual senior showcase. This event will be held next Thursday, the 12th, at 6 o'clock in the nat auditorium at the high school. It will be a great night of song and dance as the Drama Club bids farewell to their seniors. And tickets are available online through the Barnstable High School Drama Club. Also coming up is the VHS Civics Action Project Showcase. So this is being held at the Barnstable High School Library from 8:30 to 10 o'clock on Monday, June 9th. Student projects will be on display, and representatives from the 8th and 11th grade classes will be present to share their learning. It's a wonderful opportunity to hear directly from students regarding what they are passionate about in our community and their theory of action on how to bring about meaningful and positive change as civically engaged young people. And finally, as was mentioned, we celebrated our retirees Monday evening by hosting a retirees dinner at the high school. It really was a wonderful opportunity to hear about each retiree's history with Barnstable. There were so many years of experience in the room, and for a few, their time with Barnstable actually started as a student. So talk about coming full circle. I would like to congratulate all of our staff who are retiring this year. You've had a tremendous impact on the lives of so many students and the paths that they have taken beyond Barnstable Public Schools. That's all I have.
Comments, Jen?
You've got to love the Cobb Trust, right? I mean, that's just an amazing generous gift that, you know, goes a long way in these days. So that's amazing. Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
Peter, Andre, and I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
New business, item 4.1, the Environment Update on Indoor Air Quality Assessment. I'll turn it over to Dr. Hearn.
Thank you. So joining us this evening as guests via Zoom, we don't normally have a Zoom link up, but we are able to bring guests in. We have our consultants, Enviremed, who have been engaged in a various set of assessments regarding all of our buildings on indoor air quality measures. They've been wonderfully supportive thus far. They'll give you a status update on some of their findings, recommendations to the district, and next steps. In the audience are our facilities director and deputy director, who've also been super collaborative in this entire effort. And Megan Savage, the safety officer, and Tammy Cunningham, Director, Deputy Director of HR, has also been part of our overall team attending to indoor air quality and addressing, maintaining healthy indoor air quality and addressing concerns in our schools. So with that, I will turn it over to Larry Cannon, who is the CEO and owner of Enviremed. And he can introduce his team and kick us off.
Hi, Sarah. Thank you for the great introduction. I'm here tonight with Carmina, Tyler, and Ethan. And I appreciate the update about what you're doing there. You're doing some great work at the school. And it's been a pleasure working with, as you say, with all of the staff. They've been very accommodating. We've been able to get a lot of our project done. And we're happy to be here tonight, affording us the time to talk about what we, what we found out from the survey. So I appreciate the introduction. So a little bit about, and starting with Environment. We were established in 1986. We have offices in Dedham, Mass., Barrington, Rhode Island, Brooklyn, New York, and Merritton, Connecticut. We do a lot of different things. One of the major things that we do right now is indoor air quality and mold assessments, which we've been working on with you for the, for the past four months. And as I say, it's, it's gone very well. So from my, my personal background, I'm a graduate of the Yale School of Medicine, did my Master of Public Health there, and was a factory, faculty lecturer for the past 10 years at, at Yale. And I mentioned certifications, public health. I'm a certified industrial hygienist, certified safety professional, certified microbial consultant, and registered sanitaryian. So one of the things to say is, you know, over the years, we've probably done, you know, thousands of indoor air quality assessments. And we are happy that we're invited to do the Barnstable work, which is a significant piece of work, actually. In addition, you know, my background, I actually was a published author on carpal tunnel syndrome back, it was actually my Yale essay, which got published internationally about carpal tunnel syndrome. So I'm very proud of that. But we've done a lot of environmental work since founding the company. My original partner was a physician, and that's where the name Enviremed comes from. We have many affiliations, the American Industrial Hygiene Association, American Indoor Air Quality Council, which gets involved with indoor air certifications and advisory work for infrastructure projects on highways. So just, I'll take you through the general concept of how we look at mold and where we would look at mold in any environment, in any school or any building, is that mold is, is an absolutely normal part of the environment. It's, it's found in, you know, in foods. It's found in cheeses. And it's, it's pretty much omnipresent in the environment. And so it's not necessarily something that it has, it's gained somewhat of a negative connotation, but it shouldn't necessarily have that. When we worked with, with part of the team, especially Megan brought up the idea that the district has already put out some do's and don'ts. So I thought we would mention those, because part of being successful in dealing with mold is really recruiting the, all of the stakeholders, whether it be the faculty, the students, the custodial staff, and so on. One of the things that we always recommend is, you know, dusting regularly with microfiber cloths, clean surfaces weekly, use moisture-resistant materials for storage and, and decoration, and limit clutter. These are things that can be done, you know, every day in the classrooms. Avoid porous decorations, report leaks and water stains. That's very important, especially with letting the facility staff know about that. Empty dehumidifiers daily, and replace filters. And mold, as I, as I said, it's, it really is everywhere. It can grow on wood, paper. It can grow on wood, paper, carpet, food, and many porous materials. When it's seen, it should not be ignored, because it can lead to some issues down the road. So part of what we like to stress is that when mold is seen, that it, that it be cleaned up quickly. Another, one of the don'ts, a number of the don'ts, don't store paper or books on the floor, avoid fabric bins, shag rugs, and soft furnishings. Don't skip dusting or cleaning, or ignore damp spots or odors. Don't block vents, because you want good air circulation and filtration. Don't use cardboard boxes, because they're porous, they will grow mold. Avoid overcluttering, and don't skip dehumidifier emptying, because that, you can get water leaks there. So generally, what, what we need to know about mold, first of all, typically, it's not visible. Occasionally, we'll see mold on a surface and say, okay, I see something that looks like mold. But clearly, one of the things that most important from a health standpoint is that we want to keep mold out of the air, okay? If we can control airborne spores, which are allergens, and they can, you know, trigger breathing issues, that is, you know, particularly important. And where you are, at Barnstable, moisture is a key factor in mold growth. You're a coastal town, and you have naturally higher humidity. So the challenge with your engineering and systems that you have in the schools is pretty great. And, and so we understand that occasionally, there will be episodes of mold growth within the facilities. And in coastal areas, you have wind, rain, seasonal changes that can increase indoor moisture, especially in areas where you don't have, you know, up to, up-to-date HVAC systems, which may not be all of your facilities. So what did environment look at? Well, we see the indoor air environment really as a very holistic situation, where, you know, mold is really part of the indoor air environment. We look at pollutants, we look at the ventilation, the temperature, humidity, conditions within the building, and conditions regarding maintenance and HVAC systems. Another thing, particularly, you know, in case where you have what's going on with the fires in Canada, and, but generally, to check for particulate, either PM 2.5 or PM 10. So we recommend properly addressing, removing and cleaning visible mold, being proactive and diligently addressing superficial, and also airborne mold, which creates a healthy environment. So when we did our evaluations of the building, we specifically evaluated temperature, relative humidity, carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide, VOCs, which are volatile organic compounds, formaldehyde, and particulates, as well as mold, mold spores and fungi. So from that perspective, as I mentioned earlier, it was really more of a holistic evaluation. We didn't just go in and check for mold, but we checked for all of these particular independent variables to evaluate them best of the standards. We, we use real-time meters. Here's an example of a formaldehyde meter and an IAQ meter for measuring, and then a PID, which is a check for volatile organic compounds, as well as a Dataram for particulates. We, we regularly do these studies, and the standards that exist usually reside in these four regulatory bodies. Either it'll be regulated by OSHA, EPA, it could be ASHRAE, which is the American Society of Heating, Refrigerating, and Air Conditioning Engineers, or it could be LEED. So, you know, some of the school construction that's done today, much of it has LEED certification for indoor air quality and sustainability. So let's get into the survey. So we had three full-time environment staff. We went through all nine schools. It took a total of 66-person days, eight hours a day, for a total of 528 hours. And we started in February on the 26th and ended on March 28, 2025. So one thing you need to know is the intensive nature of the inspection we did. We looked at air quality in classrooms, offices, cafeterias, gymnasiums, storage areas, and mechanical spaces. Here's some examples of the spaces that we looked at. So it was really, I have to say, a very forensic examination of the building. And for indoor air sampling, we took 236 air samples, we took 102 surface samples, which are tape lifts, and all of those samples were analyzed by an independent nationally-accredited laboratory. And here's an example of the detail of showing how we do the analysis, sampling, or the analysis. We have an air sample there to the left that's called a biopump, and we're sampling a sample of the air, so many liters, up to 10 liters of air, collecting any mold spores that might be there on, on those filters. And then in the center photo, you see us taking a tape lift of something that is suspect, so we want to confirm if it's mold or not. We have prepared formal draft reports for all nine schools. In there, we put sampling methods, sampling locations, all of the reference guidelines I mentioned earlier, a complete photo journal. It's labeled, and every sample that we collected has an associated photo of that location. We have a complete laboratory report of every air and surface sample, and a summary section with conclusions and recommendations by, you know, that I personally reviewed every one of the reports as a certified mold consultant and signed off on them. It should be noted that the reports are comprehensive, they're factual, and they're very transparent. So the good news is, and this isn't always the news I deliver, but the good news is that there was no airborne toxogenic mold in any of the nine schools, in any of the samples collected. There was no airborne mold amplification, meaning, you know, we didn't, we do baseline outside samples, we didn't find a, an amplification of even allergenic molds in the air samples we took. There were some surface mold found in the various schools, but they were not airborne, and those items, temperature, relative humidity, carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide, formaldehyde, VOCs, and particulates, were all within acceptable norms. So it's a, it's a very good report. So I would say the nine Barnstable schools are clearly safe for occupancy and provide a healthy, supportive indoor air quality environment. And one of the things, you know, I asked myself after this, because quite frankly, I wasn't sure what we would find, and I know in speaking with Doug, and facilities, and Katry, and, and some of the other staff, and Megan, and Tammy, and of course, Sarah, you know, we did note that the filtration systems are very good within the schools. And Doug and Katry mentioned that you have a very good filter replacement schedule. And I, I suspect that that maintenance and HVAC care that's taken on the filtration changes had a lot to do with the clean air that we found in the buildings. So I have to say, Barnstable leadership has been engaged since day one. Facilities escorted us and provided us full access. I mean, wherever we wanted to go, we got there. And everybody was, was very helpful in getting this project done, which is not always the case. And the involvement was from day one, from the first day that we met, had our meeting, had our Zoom, from right now. I mean, everybody's been very cooperative. So let's look at the schools next. And so first, the, one of the schools we looked at was the Barnstable Community Innovation School, and I just have one slide following, which shows all of the parameters of the real-time, from temperature to carbon dioxide, were perfect. We had a couple of rooms with slightly elevated VOCs, that's pretty normal. We find that where you have perfumes or air freshers, you find that. And also, what was normal in the afternoon, we had some CO2 levels that, that were increased, but nothing to worry about. And the key thing, no airborne amplification of mold, and no presence of any toxogenic mold, and no ratio abnormality, so that's a real plus. We did find, as I mentioned earlier, in the talk, some areas where we had tape lifts that found mold, most of the cases, the mold was not toxogenic, but we are recommending that the areas be cleaned, because we don't want it to be pumping airborne issues. So we're making those recommendations in each of the reports. And next, Barnstable Intermediate School, kind of the same scenario. We had a little slightly elevated temperature part of the day, we had some elevated VOCs. Again, it's normal. In the afternoon, some CO2 were elevated, but everything was below OSHA within, within the guidelines. And again, here's a comprehensive list, so we're being very transparent here. Wherever we found suspect, and we verified it with the lab, we said, okay, we believe these areas should be cleaned and, and tested after. And again, we'll go through the next one. United Elementary School, same thing, we had a few rooms, elevated VOCs, some CO2, but no pathogenic molds, and some areas needing to be cleaned. And for Barnstable, West Barnstable Elementary, kind of a similar scenario, the only issue there was a little bit of CO2 in the afternoon, but again, well below OSHA, OSHA standards 5,000, and these were way, way lower than 5,000. And then some areas we identified just for surface cleaning. Centerville, same thing, pretty much a great picture, a little bit of CO2, which is normal, and no, no mold issues. And two minor areas isolated that should be cleaned. And then in a Cobb Early Learning Center, one room had some VOCs, some CO2 levels that went up in the afternoon, but again, the mold profile was, was very good. And some areas to mention that will be, need to be cleaned. And then for Hyannis West, similar profile, again, just one room with some VOCs. And the VOC standard that we use, as we've been mentioning, is LEEDs, which is 500 parts per billion. So it's, it's really a very low standard letter, level, so it's really not, not a, not a major issue to find some VOCs, and they're the areas that would need to be cleaned. And West Village is kind of similar, some VOCs in two rooms, and then CO2 in the afternoon. But again, it's what we would expect, you know, without having a totally upgraded HVAC system in every one of these schools, we, it's what we find typically, and some areas to be cleaned. And then, of course, Barnstable High School, which is a very large school, one of the largest ones that we've ever evaluated, and we're happy to say that we only had a few, a few, you know, things that came up. One was that in the area where they were using clay, in one of the art rooms, we had some particulates, but I guess you would understand that, because you've got dry clay, and if you've got a kiln, so you'd expect a little bit of particulate airborne. And then only four rooms in this cement school that had anything above LEED standard on VOCs, and some CO2 in the afternoon. But no, you know, 440,000 square feet, no airborne amplification or toxogenic mold airborne, which is pretty remarkable. I'd say better than most schools that we have tested. Being a big school, we identified areas that we want cleaned, whether they're by suspect or actually doing the testing, but part of our job is to be proactive. And so as far as cleaning, we recommend that custodial staff that work for Doug and Katry can, if it's under 10 square feet, okay to clean, using an EPA disinfectant. If it's bigger than that, and it's an area of concern, you might want a professional remediator to do it. But we, we recommend zero tolerance after the cleaning, so when we do the testing, we don't want to find any mold after the disinfection process occurs. And again, while they do it, we typically would have a, an air scrubber set up to clean the air during the cleaning process. Typically, what happens, you remove damaged porous materials, and once that's done, you do the post-clearance testing with a tape lift or an air sample and a, and a ongoing maintenance, which has been good, based on the air sampling. So here's an example of an air sample being collected, and how do we verify, we, when we do air clearance, we don't want toxogenic mold or any abnormal amplification, and for certification of a surface, we, we want no detectable mold. So that's, those are our standards. So what's next? Looking to the future, we have put together a training program based on Tools for Schools. We've used these training programs very successfully in other school systems to make everybody more aware of things that they need to be thinking about during the day and, and cleaning and so on at the school facilities. And the training includes topics on moisture control, clarifying common concerns, real-life examples, decision-making, and response protocols to reporting. So here is a, just a summary with an outline of what we typically do on training. We talk about creating a safe environment for breathing in the environment, understanding respiratory system, HVAC system, HVAC systems, identifying biological and chemical contaminants, et cetera. So we're, we're looking forward to getting that training up and running with, you know, in the field with the, with the team in Barnstable. Important is that we've, we've listened to community concerns, and, and we believe that, you know, certainly the school and the representative from Barnstable have been great. They've communicated the community concerns to us, and, and they've responded by partnering very well with us. They have given us clear and honest information, and they're dead, they have been good communicators throughout this process. They're looking for a long-term and sustainable initiative to keep the air quality great as it is. Environment has collaborated with Barnstable, also on working on a webpage to, designed to produce, reassure students, faculty, staff with clarity and actionable guidance and And the web, the webpage that's in process, Carmina has been working with the Barnstable team to provide a district-wide IAQ initiative, address common questions, so, you know, and such as, when should I report a mold problem? When do I think I have a mold problem? And to connect all of the teachers, faculty, parents to, you know, to valuable IAQ resources, including EPA, and even how to submit a report saying they want facilities to take a look at, at a mold issue. And we expect that that site will be up and running by the end of July. Here's just an example of what, what this webpage will look like, and some icons there that you can click on to go and get more information about mold. One thing that we, we look to the future and we recommend is that there be periodic spot checks on a monthly basis for each school for mold and IAQ, and we would recommend that, especially during the summer months, when it's humid and we feel as if we want to get ahead of a problem that might be developing, and it provides a proactive approach to dealing with any indoor air concerns. And then last, and which is the long-term on the horizon, is to look at scheduling the mechanical engineering HVAC assessments and evaluations, and those obviously need to dovetail with the district's capital improvement plans. I know that there are at least a couple of schools, or one school in particular, that's having a lot of capital improvements to improve the envelope of the building and the HVAC system. So that, that's how we, we see things. And we're open to questions now, and I appreciate the time. You've given us a lot of time to put all of this information together. And as I mentioned during the talk, you will have draft reports. They're in final draft right now, they've been sent for a final review, and I'm sure they'll be released shortly. So I want to, from my team to yours, appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight, and open to any questions you might have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Before I open it up for questions or comments... All right. Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Before I open it up for questions or comments, I just want to thank you for the very thorough report. I was part of the RFP committee and you certainly have lived up to what your proposal indicated you intended to do. And I thank you. I'll start with Jen.
Thank you.
Yes. First, I just want to say thank you for the presentation. It's very clear that you did a very thorough job. And I think the families were asking for that. And I think so was the superintendent in the school committee, quite frankly. And I appreciate all the information and how you broke it down, school by school. I think that's invaluable. And I guess my question is really for the superintendent, and I know the answer to it. I just want to make sure everybody hears it, that when this report is finally is given to us, we will put it on the website and maybe email it out to parents, right?
Yeah, we will share the final reports and this presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great report, great presentation as well. And the results were great. So, you know, that's the complete package there. I just have one question. As you're aware, we had quite an issue at one of our buildings last summer, BUES. And I know you recommend monthly IAQ assessments. This mold seemed to come fast, quick. Is there more we should be doing for that particular building this summer? Because probably like every other summer, it will be a hot and humid summer at some point. And we never want to go through that nightmare again.
Okay. I think it's a good question. I didn't catch your first name.
Peter.
Peter. So, you know, I've seen this happen before. And one of the things that I've seen in my experience is if an HVAC system, for example, has been shut down, if that happens for a period of time, what happens is that you get an accumulation of moisture and you don't have enough air movement and you can have, it's seemingly overnight, everything is covered with mold. So I think the HVAC systems and engineering has to be working. Even if there's nobody in that building, you need air changes, you need the filters working, and you really need surveillance. I had a case probably about 10 years ago. I got a call from a university and it was from the facilities director. And the facilities director said, Larry, we walked into the dormitory and everything in there was covered with mold. And we were just shocked. We don't know what to do. School was starting like three weeks. And they had temporarily paused the HVAC units working. And so the humidity went high, you know, a lot of fabric, there were a lot of curtains in there, there were rugs. And, you know, it was a tough situation. But, you know, as I'm saying, if you can keep ahead, at least from the engineering side, and do that surveillance, that would be helpful. It's not always easy. I mean, you are in a very moist environment. And, you know, it's going to be a challenge. And not every school and not every school system anywhere has schools that are perfectly engineered. So it's a process. And so you have to be vigilant about that.
Well, thank you. Maybe this is for the superintendent then. Thank you, Larry. So is our plan at BUES to leave the AC on for the summer?
This might be a more technical question. I think there's a bit of a difference between the AC and the HVAC system. And the AC at BUES, if it's on, needs to be, there's another layer to the AC with respect to, the AC is designed to have about 1,000 people in it. And if the set point is incorrect, it can actually get too cold, which can cause its own problem in terms of condensation and moisture. So I'm going to defer, in terms of those settings, I'm going to defer to Doug and Catry and EnviroMed. At a minimum, we need to have HVAC and the exhaust running. We don't have AC in all of our schools. And so, you know, I think when we do run the AC, it'll be very carefully done because we also have to watch that set point stuff.
Yeah, because, you know, we don't ever want to go through what we went through. That's for sure. Thank you.
Andre.
My question, when your draft comes out, will that include, and you might have said this, I'm sorry, the number, will that include guidance for us going forward, you know, five, 10 years? And I ask that because, you know, another, you know, our buildings are older, you know, there's a range, but some of them quite old, you know. And so, you know, will we have an understanding of how best to maintain some of our buildings, again, you know, World War II era, you know, kind of going into the future?
Right. I think that the report's focused on the current situation and what, you know, what needs to be done if there's cleaning that needs to be done, that kind of thing, how to do that cleaning. There is a phase that we proposed originally with our proposal, which would be to have an HVAC engineer come in and evaluate the HVAC systems. And again, it would make most sense if you're going to be doing upgrades, maybe to prioritize which of those schools you would want to look at. But we do have a mechanical engineer at the point where you want them to look at it. That's the really, to answer the question, the more longer range situation is what is, how old is the HVAC system? How efficient is it? How is it doing in terms of the ventilation of the entire facility? That's really the mechanical engineering assessment. I know Doug has already done some of that with the school that's having the construction project. But that would generally be my recommendation is to continue that as you look at your upcoming projects, your capital projects that have that mechanical engineering assessment. That's important. That's a good question.
Thank you. I have what I need unless superintendent has any questions. Nope. So thank you so much for the report and for coming and addressing it. And thank you to your team who was also here.
Our pleasure. Thank you very much. It's been our pleasure working with Barnstable. You've all been great, and we appreciate the opportunity.
Have a nice night.
Thank you. You too. Thank you.
Thank you.
So item 4.2, the Wellness Committee Presentation.
I'll introduce our co-chairs of the Wellness Committee, Dave Badoe, Director of Food Services, and our, I'm not sure the exact title, Director of Health Services, Coordinator of Nursing, Alicia Bryant, Director of Health Services. They co-chair the Wellness Committee, which we are required to have and is governed by one of your policies. And so every three years, they come and do an update to you.
Good evening. I'm Dave Badoe and Alicia Bryant. We're the co-chairs for the Barnstable Wellness Committee. We appreciate your time tonight. We do apologize. We are reporting a little bit late. We both have had some either personal issues that had come up or some good issues come up.
I had a baby two years ago and we would have been reporting on this.
So it just delayed the reporting. So we are catching up right now and we appreciate you taking the time tonight to hear where we are.
So I don't think I need to read the district vision statement to you all, but I did want to highlight that our vision statement aligns with the focus areas of a wellness committee. I wanted to, you know, we highlighted and underlined that our vision statement speaks to the whole child and a physical, social, emotional environment, learning environment. And that's what we do with the Wellness Committee. We want to focus on the whole child, not just one aspect, but all of it that can contribute to student wellness. Because really, student wellness is tied to student success in their education and their daily lives. A couple of stats that I wanted to pull related to wellness objectives and goals for this school year. I think, you know, it's no secret, it's a nationwide concern of obesity and overweight children. 38.6% of our students who had a height and weight measurement this year fell into the categories of overweight or obese. And we also, again, no secret, the mental health crisis that everyone is facing. 615 of our Barnstable students, which is almost 13%, have a behavioral or mental health condition reported to school nursing. And this number is probably low between undiagnosed conditions or parents who might not have disclosed it to the schools. So again, you'll see in the next slide, but Dave will speak to it. These are, you know, pieces of our children, of our students, that we really want to focus on what we can do to help them.
Okay. Overall wellness encompasses three domains. We've got nutrition, mental health, and physical activity. Our requirements for our wellness policy, local educational agency participating in the national school program or breakfast program are required to develop a local school wellness policy that promotes the health of students. The local wellness policy must include specific goals for nutrition promotion and education, physical activity, and other school-based activities that are designed to promote student wellness. An assessment of the local wellness policy must be conducted at least every three years to determine the compliance progress and the extent of which the policy compares to the model local school wellness policies.
So as Dave mentioned, this was actually done a couple of years ago. This report summary from our survey was in school year 22, 23. Previous surveys were done in, I believe, 2016 and 2019. So we're actually coming into a survey year next year. So we'll probably see you again sooner than later. But we wanted to show the makeup of the respondents. When we do these wellness surveys, we are asking the buildings really, you know, how we're adhering to our wellness policy and guidelines. And we send this out to nurses, principals, and health and PE teachers. And you can see, we had a pretty even spread across the roles, which with a representative from each grade level and building. So I think it's really good to see that we did have varying perspectives weighing in on our survey questions.
You know, our survey topics, we had several of them. They were on snacks, food celebrations, the fundraises and PTO events, sharing of the wellness guidelines to our families, health education, physical education, other opportunities for physical education, like obviously including recess, lunch, hunger, mental health, and other areas of concern that related to student wellness.
So these next several slides are very wordy. We just wanted to have them in here for you to be able to look at. We summarized our key findings, some highlights that we noted because we did want to, you know, shine on some of the positives and some of the challenges that we continue to see around the district related to those topics. Again, there's a lot here. You can look at it and feel free to reach out to us with any questions. We did summarize the key findings. I did want to touch on this slide, though. At the end of the survey, we did ask a multiple choice question where the respondents could choose as many or as few concerns that they had, what they thought were of the greatest concern to our students at that time. We were really looking at where we wanted to focus our efforts in years to come. And I think, again, no secret, mental health was the leading concern from our respondents, which hadn't historically been an area that the Wellness Committee really focused on. We were really focused a lot on nutrition, mostly on food, then on physical activity. But I think this really highlighted the need to start kind of expanding our focus.
Okay. Yeah, the school nutrition program continues to be our strength and our wellness adherence. The food choices often in our cafeteria exceeds the USDA nutritional requirements. If any concerns are brought up, they're addressed through the food services who works closely with our building principals and other administrators. Some progress has been made in regards to the frequency of the food being brought in for school celebrations and limiting what is brought in, or what is brought in, comes in pre-packed and clearly labeled. So at least we can tell if it has the nutritional values and if there's any allergies. However, it's still inconsistent. We would like to see non-celebrations become more standard as the sharing of food is a concern for nutrition, safety, and equity standpoints.
One of the frequently commented on concerns was limited opportunities for physical activity, both in school and out of school. That was across all grade levels in all buildings. So, you know, in future years and future goals, we'd like to see an increase in physical activity, both through increased opportunities for physical education and alternative options for physical activity offered across all grade levels. And again, mental health was ranked as the greatest concern facing our students today. We've talked a lot about this as a committee. You know, we meet four times a year. We come up with a handful of goals a year. And mental health is just such a huge, kind of overwhelming topic that, you know, impacts all of our students. So we feel our survey kind of serves as further reinforcement of the need and maybe that work in this area can be addressed by another committee who can focus its efforts specifically on mental health. So kind of stepping away from the survey, we really wanted to highlight what we did this year. We had what I think are some really, really great positive actions that we did this year. So like I mentioned, we develop typically about three goals a year of things that we want to do. For a few years, there was a lot of talk around the food celebrations and snacks and great discussions, but not a ton of action made. So this year, we really wanted to kind of think outside of the box we had been in. And these were our three goals of the year. The first was to develop a wellness newsletter to try to get some information out to families. Two additions were created using Smore. Articles were contributed by staff and students. Topics included wellness activities around the district, which included photos sent in from our schools of activities that students were taking part in across the district, doing wellness-related activities. And some seasonal wellness tips were contributed as well. In the fall/winter edition, there were 6,600 views. And in the spring, 7,000. I can't say whether people read it top to bottom, but those were the stats that came out from Smore on that. So we were excited about it. It was fun to put together.
And our second goal was the menu review committee. We had two really great meetings, obviously with myself and with our food service management company, the Abbey Group. We did, there was some areas of concern that were addressed, some high sugary breakfast items that were being served to our students, prepackaged items and things like that. We did have some updates, including new items that were requested, such as hummus and vegetable options. Also, although we are required to serve whole grains and multigrains, it didn't seem like the public was aware of that. So we wanted to make sure that we highlighted that information on our menus or whatever, wherever else we communicate with our families. So that has been done also.
And then finally, our third goal was to hold what we're thinking is the first annual Screen Free Week. It was held just last month, the 5th to the 9th of May. We invited our elementary students in all five schools to participate. All students were sent home with a flyer that looked like this. Each grade had its own color and it was translated into Portuguese and Spanish as well. It included these little coupons for students to list what they did that afternoon at home, which was an activity that did not include screens. We weren't necessarily saying, go home and, you know, unplug the Wi-Fi and, you know, hide your remotes. It was more just go home, think outside of your normal activities. What can you do today? That didn't involve a screen. Bring your ticket in tomorrow and the grade with the most tickets at the end of the week gets an extra recess. And we provided a list of activities for them to choose from. So the highlight of this is that we had 2,023 coupons returned. And the photo on the left was sent to me by Kathy Amato at High West. A student actually went above and beyond and made a little A student actually went above and beyond and made a little project out of it, showing that he had relaxed time. He played at the lake and made hot dogs and smores. On the right, this is what Centerville did. They taped up every ticket that came in to kind of incentivize each other to do something that night, to boost their grade above the others. And I did see, I had them all send me their results, and each day, each grade had more and more tickets returned. And some of the building staff sent me their favorite submissions that were sent in by students, which included creating mischief, browsing the garden, creating mud potions, watching the sunset, making sun catchers, a glow stick party, complained, I hope it wasn't about putting their screen away, bird watching, starting a diary, and playing hotel.
So, looking ahead to next school year, we're going to continue the momentum of developing actual goals. As Alicia mentioned, it is going to be a survey year. We're going to add committee members, including students, maybe other school committee members. We're going to expand on the Screen Free Week and a new health curriculum adopted.
Here is a list of the Wellness Committee members for the year. These individuals attended at least one of our meetings this year. We had them at seven forty-five in the morning four times this year. So, thank you to these individuals. And you can see, you know, we range from nursing to health and PE teachers, principals, our district physician consultants. Mike Judge joined us, Mary Beth Taylor was on it, so we had a pretty good representation this year.
I do have to say, you know, out of all the years that I've been on the Wellness Committee, I haven't been the co-chair the whole time, but over the past couple of years, it seems that we've had a consistent amount of people that have joined, and there's been a lot of good feedback. So, it's been, this past year's been a good year and good feedback, and I feel like we've really started making some motion and created some different goals this year. So, I'm pretty happy where we've been this past year.
Thank you. Jen, questions?
Yeah, thank you for the report. It's interesting, and it's nice to see thinking outside the box and other things. I have a couple of ideas. One is that, you know, Barnstable Recreation and the HYCC is chomping at the bit to help keep kids active. And if you look at their brochures, they're low cost, you know, for not just vacation weeks, but all summer, my kid went to the summer camps. It was like eight weeks for like eight hundred bucks. You could not beat it with a stick. Tons of activities, tons of outdoor stuff, and they really catered every single kid. And it's not necessarily the kid that has the skills for soccer all the time. You can play soccer at the HYCC. So, I would, you know, encourage you to look at the HYCC and Chris Ganella over there and see if there's something you could do to dovetail, you know, your healthy living with their healthy living. And the other thing is that I'm really into how diverse we are as a community. And I think if we could tap into the abuelas out there and the vavos and have them teach their kids, or maybe write a recipe book about healthy food from their particular country of origin, or whatever their history is, I think that, you know, you'd have, you'd expand maybe your playing field, because there's a lot of healthy food everywhere in the world. It's really in America where you get the ramen and the mac and cheese and all the other stuff, right, and the McDonald's and everything else. My husband's from Cozumel, and they eat tortillas made by hand, fresh fish that they just caught, fresh salsas. There's very little fat, there's, you know, very little, you know, complex carbohydrates and all the other crap that we cram in our bodies every day. But I think that that multicultural piece might give you a larger audience. Those are just a couple of ideas, and I think it's awesome. Thanks.
Thank you.
Peter?
Yeah. Thanks, Dave and Alicia. That was a very good report. I too was surprised by, I think it was only twenty-five people you surveyed, but the mental health being number one, that would, I was thinking nutrition, but that was me. I love how you guys shared the wellness guidelines. As a parent, I would find those things very helpful. I love the Screen Free Week. I know I've kind of shared this with anyone who listens. Raising kids, I had what was called a net time, which stood for no electronics time, from four to seven every day. There was nothing on. And they either read, or they did their homework, or something like that. And they actually ended up helping make dinner and, you know, doing, because they ran out of things to do, so, you know, they couldn't turn on the TV. So, I don't know how you expand. Maybe the Screen Free Week was too much, or make it every Wednesday, or anything you could do to expand, that would be good. I love the comment, "I played at the lake," and then he made hot dogs and smores. You would have liked to have seen him say multi-grain nutrition bars or something like, but, you know, what the heck? But I would certainly recommend anything to expand on that screen-free time, I think is a really important thing. It would certainly affect the mental health part of that survey, I believe. Well done. Thank you.
Andre?
Yeah, just to add, oh yeah, I'm sorry, one thing, it was just a thought. Do kids still have celebrations like birthday in elementary school and stuff like that? They still do? There is no rule, like, could I send in cupcakes? Is there a rule that bans that?
It's building-dependent.
It's, okay. I kind of think that's the way it should be. I'm not into mandating bans and stuff like that. So, I understand you'd all like to, you know, be eating carrot sticks at the birthdays. I get it, but I'm also interested in not, you know, making that a strict rule.
Peter, just for clarification, we have asked, we have asked the building principals to just ensure that it's not homemade items.
I get it.
It's something that's purchased.
That makes sense.
The nutritional information's on there.
Sure. The nuts in it or whatever.
Correct. It just makes it so much easier for Alicia and her team.
I think that's a good policy.
Yeah. We do have a couple of schools who have gone non-food celebration, and it works for them.
It works for them, yeah.
We have a couple that still don't.
That's the way I'd like it to be, yeah. Thank you.
Andre?
No problem at all. Just, you know, concur with my colleagues. Outstanding the work that you do. It's good to see these things kind of highlighted, platformed, consolidated in one particular place. It's undeniable, the connection between the screen time and the mental health, you know, and the impact that one has on the other. I do like the idea of, you know, a separate committee for mental health, or a focus specifically, you know, on that topic, and then just kind of unpacking it. Because, you know, just to, first of all, just the understanding piece, and then to provide those supports. And I just, it's two things. You know, first, you know, the individual, the student, that's high achieving, respectful, well-mannered, you know, everything seems to be on the up and up. This student, they couldn't possibly, you know, but things are certain, they do have certain mental health struggles that they're not necessarily able to express. There's that case. And then, the other case, I'm dating myself, but I don't mind, you know, because for me, it was, "Rub some dirt on it. You're not hurt. Go back, rub some dirt on it, and go back out there. You know, you didn't hurt yourself, you know." And this idea, we didn't grow up with the idea of mental health. And so, what I'm establishing is that, you know, there was a study done, and I'm not, you know, but I, proud Class of Two Thousand Barnstable High School member, I grew up in the analog era. So, analog meaning, you called people. And when I graduated, that's when there was the shift to digital, you know. But, you know, they don't have any understanding of anything but the digital era. There is no conception. And so, when we say mental health, that term, it hits different depending on where you are. Because, mental health, we didn't, you know, you just get out there and tough it out. You know, we didn't talk about anxiety, we didn't talk about depression, you know, we didn't talk about all of these things. They weren't prominent kind of in the culture. And so, you know, I just think that line is important for people, for parents and their kids, you know. Is, you know, will parents even acknowledge these terms, you know, because you didn't use that, those words, you know, and you just, you know, you need to be tougher, and that's the end of it. And how can we, what I'm saying, how can we strike that balance? Because sometimes, there is a need for greater resilience, because life is going to be this way, and, you know, if you want to get to where you're going to get to, you're going to have to just get through these obstacles one way or another. But then, there is that other side of it, you know, in terms of, again, when we talk about mental health, you know, if you're staring at flickering images for six or seven hours a day of everybody telling you how great their life is in comparison to your life, you're going to leave that comparison is a thief of joy. And we spend hours and hours a day comparing ourselves unrealistically. You know, so, that's, I'm just, you know, a mental health committee, and those are just two things. How we see mental health, generationally speaking, you know, analog, digital era, and then, you know, the flickering images. So, there was some mischief created when the students were not, you know, but I think that's probably a net positive. Good job. Thanks.
Thank you. I have just a couple of questions. Who did you survey? Did you survey the families or the students?
The survey was principals, nurses, and PE and health teachers.
Oh, okay. I wasn't quite sure.
And it was based on our wellness guidelines and how the schools were adhering to them.
Information they were gathering. Okay, thank you. And you did mention that the survey was from twenty-two, twenty-three. Since you plan to reissue the survey, I know you're only required to come once every three years, but that doesn't mean you can't come again. It would be at least helpful to see the results of the survey. If you, you're welcome to come, we would like for you to come next year, but even if you just send us the survey results to see whether things are improving or getting worse, that hopefully they're improving. And it was, I liked that May date, the May date for the screen, no-screen time. Centerville Elementary used to run, some of you may remember, the No-TV Week, and it was always during Final Four March Madness, and the number-one offender in our family was Dad. And, because the whole family did it back then, but it was always, he was always sneaking off into the bedroom to cheat. So, it's nice that it's being held. I just threw him under the bus.
Got to keep that in context. Better hope.
I better hope he's still around our anniversaries this week, so hopefully, I won't get ditched before them. But we're all for that. We like that, too. Peter and I talk about it a lot, how we had no electronics or food upstairs on floor two. Everybody had to be in our face with their electronics or eating, so it was helpful. That's it. Thank you. Appreciate your time. Item four point three, revised policy JJEF, the Student Activity Accounts Management. This is a first read. There was only one revision made to the policy, which was to update it. It's on page one, number two, to be in line with what we approved last month with the unassigned revenue fund procedure. So, it's just cleanup. And we'll be back in June for a vote. The policy subcommittee can be meeting again if needed with feedback. You can reach out to Peter, or the superintendent, or directly with me. Item four point four, approve the appointment of a school nurse at Barnstable High School.
Great. Thank you. Due to our retirement, we have a vacancy, and the recommendation here is that the school committee appoint Sarah Butler to be a school nurse at Barnstable High School. She is currently serving as a substitute nurse with us, in addition to her other professional background experiences.
I'll move to approve, I'll make a motion to move, move to approve the appointment of Sarah Butler, the school nurse at Barnstable High School.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item four point five, approve an associate principal for CCTE, the College and Career Technical Education Director job description.
Thank you. This is a budget-neutral update to one of the associate principals' job descriptions, and that would be to fold in some responsibilities to coordinate college and career technical education responsibilities. That work is currently distributed among a number of our curriculum coordinators, the grants manager, teachers, and our program is large enough, we have over four hundred students in formal pathway programs. Our program is large enough that we want to model a position similar to ones that are found in some other districts, for an associate principal to add some responsibilities in that kind of curriculum leadership realm. This has been shared with the BAO as it relates to the associate principal being part of that collective bargaining agreement.
And you said that's, did I hear you say budget neutral?
Budget neutral.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it doesn't add a position, so that's why it's just the job description.
Yeah. I move to approve the associate principal for CCTE, College and Career Technical Education Director job description as presented in tonight's materials.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item four point six, approve revised maritime science instructor job description.
Thank you. Per the Coast Guard model, we have two maritime science instructors. One is the senior maritime science instructor, who is Captain Schultz, and the other is the maritime science instructor, whose job description has been revised by the Coast Guard. You are not looking to appoint, approve a position. We already have one in the budget for maritime science. This is just an updated job description to be consistent with the Coast Guard, who recently redid it.
I'll move to approve the revised maritime science instructor job description as presented in tonight's materials.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item four point seven, approve alternative graduation coordinator job description.
Thank you. This is a supplemental staffing position for the summer timeframe for an alternative graduation coordinator. This person monitors students from various programs in the district and helps them work towards summer graduation, which is held on the second Monday in August. This has been worked through with the BTA as a per diem, which is what we customarily do for additional days that staff, like nurses or guidance counselors, work over the summer.
I'll move to approve the alternative graduation coordinator job description as presented in tonight's materials.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Finance and facilities. Item five point one, approve an English-language learner's department head, pre-K to seven position.
So, tonight, I'm asking for your approval to, we're still working out some of the details as we see our student population across various schools, their schedules and vacancies that we may have come up within this department. But I'd like to have the flexibility to take one of the vacancies that we have and morph it into a department head. Department heads continue to teach, so there is a student-facing component to this, but there is also an additional layer of leadership and supervision of teachers that this would bring. And it is a strong recommendation slash requirement from the Department of Education, based on our numbers here in the district and the needs of our students, that we expand to some additional leadership positions. The position would be a pre-K to seven department head. We currently have an eight-through-twelve department head, and so, the English-language learner department or multilingual department would kind of mirror what we currently have for art and music. And so, I'm asking for your approval. In terms of budget implications, the salary wouldn't change, this is a teacher's salary, but there would be an increment of approximately ten thousand dollars stipend, which is in the appendix of the collective bargaining agreement.
I'll move to approve the English-language learner's department head, pre-K to seven position.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item five point two, approve the alternative graduation coordinator position.
This corresponds with a position to go with four point seven, the job description that you approved.
I move to approve the alternative graduation coordinator position.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item five point three, approve the accounts payable warrant, fiscal year twenty-five, warrant number forty-eight.
I move to approve accounts payable warrant, FY twenty-five, warrant number forty-eight, in the amount of eight-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and fifty-one cents.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And I abstain, I haven't had a chance to look at it. Motion carries unanimously. Consent agenda, item six point one, approve the school committee meeting minutes of May seventh. Approve item six point two, approve- approve the Barnstable Public Schools Collective Bargaining Negotiating Team Meeting Minutes of April 7, 2025. Item 6.3, approve the fiscal year '25 Grants, Gifts, and Donations. Item 6.4, Budget Transfer Authorization. So tonight's consent agenda includes those above four items.
I'll move to approve the items in the consent agenda as presented in tonight's materials.
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Executive Session. Item 7.1, move to go into executive session to reconvene an open session to approve the school committee executive session meeting minutes of May 7, 2025, to approve the Barnstable Public Schools Collective Bargaining Negotiating Team executive session meeting minutes of April 7, 2025, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and/or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, David Badeau, Sandy Gifford, Karina De Silva, and the interim co-director of Special Education, six to 12, and to discuss terms and conditions of a non-affiliated personnel contract and a litigation update.
Second.
This is a roll call vote. Jen, Peter.
Yes.
Andre.
Yes.
And I vote yes. We are going into executive session.
So, we're now back in open session on item eight point one, approve the employment contract for the executive director of multilingual learners.
I move to approve a one-year employment contract for the executive director of multilingual learners, Karina De Silva, beginning on July 1, 2025 with a base salary of $135,181. And other terms is presented in tonight's materials.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item eight point two, approve the employment contract for the director of transportation.
Move to approve a three-year employment contract for the director of transportation, Sandy Gifford, beginning on July 1, 2025 with a base salary of $114,457.90. And other terms is presented in tonight's materials.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item eight point three, approve the employment contract for the director of food services.
I move to approve a three-year employment contract for the director of food services, David Badeau, beginning on July 1, 2025 with a base salary of $114,457.90. And other terms as presented in tonight's materials.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, now we'll back up for your presentation.
Thank you so much, Kathy, coming in at the end of the meeting. Apologize for those that look forward to this during the school committee comments, but have to go forward as Barnstable remains a large, a dynamic and a diverse district with a number of things happening, particularly in the month of June, our last school month. So without further ado, the first graders at West Villages took part in their annual hat parade.
We just lost our quorum. We need three, so Jen's gonna stay?
Wonderful. Didn't want to lose the quorum in order to provide for the community what's taking place in our schools. As I was saying, the first graders at West Villages took part in their annual hat parade. Under beautiful skies, students proudly showed off their creative hats and delighted parents and classmates with joyful songs. This is at West Villages Elementary. Gonna move over to Hyannis West Elementary where every Thursday in the fall and spring, students take desks for dirt and dive into hands-on learning with our amazing master gardeners from planting veggies to meeting worms, exploring pollinators and discovering how composting helps earth. Our outdoor classroom is always buzzing with excitement. We're going to stay at Hyannis West Elementary where our first grade geologist in action wrapped up their CKLA History of the Earth unit by diving into earth's wonders, learning about all the landforms, rock layers, geysers, volcanoes, fossils, dinosaurs, and more. They are becoming experts in geology, one discovery at a time. Still at Hyannis West Elementary, they had the incredible honor of hosting the internationally renowned storyteller Antonio Rocha, who brought tales from around the world to life for our families. Thank you so much to the Cobb Grant for supporting this unforgettable experience. Fast forwarding, but we're staying at Hyannis West Elementary where students in the after-school program racked up their incredible Junior Police Academy led by our very own Brian Morrison. From exploring the roles of the Barnstable Police Department to hands-on learning about rescue missions, SWAT K-9 units, ambulance services, and more. Thank you so much to Barnstable Police Department for working with our elementary students. This is at Barnstable, West Barnstable Elementary. Told you I have a lot to report this month. Where families were allowed to witness the hatching of baby peacocks. Barnstable, West Barnstable Elementary actually witnessing the birth of baby peacocks. Let's go over to West Villages Elementary where the first graders got a chance to participate in an art truck creative adventure thanks to the Catuat Center for the Arts and their amazing work. Retrofitted school bus turned into a mobile classroom. Students had a blast exploring the colorful space and creating their very own octopus artwork. Again, a special thank you to the Catuat Center for the Arts for partnering with our West Villages students. We're gonna return to West Barnstable, BWB, where kindergarteners experienced colonial times through their literacy unit, and this is going to kick off a theme of colonial education. We're gonna move over to Barnstable United Elementary School where students from the E-Wall Chase Pod proudly presented their Revolutionary War heroes to caretakers and peers. Each student stepped up into the shoes of historical figures, sharing firsthand insights based on their research. It was an inspiring, excuse me, an inspiring display of knowledge, creativity, and passion for history. Staying at Barnstable United Elementary School, again, this is a CKLA unit where students became historical figures, everyone from George Washington to Betsy Ross, and researched biographies of these colonial figures. We're gonna continue on with the patriotic theme. Memorial Day was celebrated across the district. These are students and staff members at West Villages Elementary honoring and commemorating Memorial Day. At Barnstable United Elementary School, we'll head over there. Students did poetry, song, and inspired words. There was a special guest of Technical Sergeant Blune. The assembly concluded with a poignant rendition of taps. We're gonna head over to the intermediate school, again, to commemorate Memorial Day, where the JORTC color guard proudly presented their colors and salute with taps for Memorial Day. Again, what our students were doing to commemorate this holiday. This is the Barnstable High School Military Support Club that showed their true commitment by participating in the annual Operation Flags for Vets at Massachusetts National Cemetery in Bourne. Running on just a few hours of sleep after prom and celebration, these incredible students still showed up to help place over 77,000 flags in honor of our beloved veterans. We're so proud of their spirit, service, and respect for those who served. Gonna head back over to Barnstable United Elementary School where their cultural fair took place, where students shared their cultures and with warmth for one another through games, music, and traditions. This is at Barnstable United Elementary School. We are gonna get to the high school, folks, I promise. It was a great presentation from all of our students that went on the field trip to Washington, D.C., but this is the picture that they took before heading out. Now, we're coming down the home stretch. We're gonna move over to the high school, and I promise you, we're gonna move expeditiously. But the Hope Squad, along with close family and friends, took part in a walk on behalf of sharing kindness. This is a local organization dedicated to suicide awareness and prevention. Great job to our Hope Squad at the high school. DECA could not be here today for the meeting, but I want to give them a shout-out as the members visited Ms. Andrews' sixth-grade Gateway Class and taught students how to deliver an effective marketing presentations. Classes were studying mathematics and vocabulary behind the popular show Shark Tank. DECA's tips will help the middle school entrepreneurs deliver a persuasive pitch at the end of the unit and become sharks in the marketplace. Great job to our DECA students. We're gonna stay at the high school. Couple things more to report. The Criminal Justice Class visited the Mokley Courthouse. This is on May 20th, and I want to give a shout-out to Mr. Dumas. The Criminal Justice Class took part, excuse me, they heard directly from U.S. District Judge Gordon and members of the U.S. Marshal Service, gaining firsthand experience and insight into the federal court and proceedings and careers for those who might consider it in criminal justice. A big thank you to Assistant Chief Deputy U.S. Marshal Matthew Dumas, proud Barnstable High School graduate, class of '93. Staying at the high school. Ms. Sweeney seniors participated in children's in literature class and brought stories to life with a story walk at Mass Audubon Long Pasture Wildlife Sanctuary. As a culminating project, the students designed and installed a story walk to promote youth literacy, family time, and a love of nature. Great job to Ms. Sweeney's class, our high school students. This exciting news, 63 of our seniors, many of them first-generation college students, visited Cape Cod Community College as part of the Four Seas Pathways Program with incredible support from the Four Seas advisors and staff and guidance from our dedicated school counselors. Students completed their financial aid, declared majors, and selected fall courses. They are now fully prepared to start their college journey this fall. We are not done, folks. Thirty Barnstable High School juniors from the education pathway and Ms. Sorriello's, apologize in advance, our Latino and Hispanic student ally, took a big step toward their college future by visiting Bridgewater College. They connected with 100-plus college reps and explored new programs and left inspired by all the possibilities ahead. Want to give a huge shout-out to the yearbook staff on the yearbook. Their creativity that brought this year's yearbook to life, great job. We're coming down the home stretch, I promise. This is the Career Pathways Capstone Projects of our high school students. I want to give a big shout-out to Ms. Eastman for coordinating this incredible opportunity and to everyone who helped, the BHS staff, families, and our amazing community partners for preparing our students for their future careers. This is the Capstone Project at the high school. Cannot say enough about our Coast Guard. They proudly presented the colors at the Coast Guard Auxiliary University's program Change of Watch Ceremony at Massachusetts Maritime Academy. This special event marked a change in leadership for MMA's Cadets Coast Guard Auxiliary Unit. Was attended by 50 guests, excuse me, guests, including Mass Maritime Leadership President Admiral Was attended by fifty guests, excuse me, guests, including Mass Maritime Leadership President Admiral McDonald, Cadets Coast Guard Auxiliary members, and active-duty Coast Guard personnel. Great job. We're coming down the home stretch, folks. This is the Swing Summit, which was a collaboration, I'm glad to hear this as an educator in New Bedford Public Schools, between our band and orchestra and that of the New Bedford Public Schools. They had a blast collaborating, performing, and connecting through music. Your energy, kindness, and musicianship made it the day unforgettable. We're not done yet. This is the Spring Concert, folks, presented by the Barnstable High School Performing Arts Department. They lit up their stage with their incredible performances from our students, musicians. Bravo to everyone who made this night memorable for all. And a hundred and twenty-one of our performing arts students took the first-place prize with their superior ratings and top ensemble music at the Music in the Parks Event at Westfield State. The jazz band earned second place with incredible ratings. Great job on your hard work and teamwork. As we wrap it up, these are just a couple shots from our prom that took place. So just a couple of the many. I know I wasn't able to get to anybody, excuse me, to get to everybody, but I did want to give a huge shout-out to Mara Rebunchen, who took over Celebration, took the baton this year, and Celebration, along with prom, were outstanding. This was last night, the senior awards ceremony, as was said, over four hundred thousand dollars in scholarships to our senior students. It was an incredible night. And this was, as we wrap up with athletics, they celebrated a successful season by honoring some of the student athletes. Congratulations to all of the student athletes that received awards. And this is the conclusion, folks. I've promised that we were gonna arrive. I just had to give a shout-out to all of our spring sports. Boys tennis, that concluded their season. Girls tennis, that concluded a successful season. Our softball team, that concluded a successful season. This is our girls golf team, that's participating in the state tournament today. A couple of the participants, our sailing team, on a successful season. Barnstable is one of the only schools in the Commonwealth to have a club girls' flag football team that's playing today against Salem. We'll get those results for you, but this is gonna be an MIAA sport. And in conclusion, folks, our boys volleyball team continues to advance in the state tournament. They knocked off last night on the road, St. John's Prep, and will be continuing on. I'm not sure if it's the Elite Eight or the Final Four, but our boys volleyball team is still going. This is an incredible run, possibly as far as they've gone in the school's history, and a huge win last night against St. John's Prep. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Roll call, Jen? Andre?
Yes.
And I vote yes, we're now adjourned. Thank you.